One minute. Um, prayer. You are friends and then we'll get started our meeting.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I get a motion to approve the commission on September sixteenth as presented.
I'll motion.
Paul Sager.
Aye.
Plans one through one hundred ninety three in amount of six hundred fifty thousand nine hundred four dollars seventy seven cents. The unpublished planes and the favorable plan.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
For employment division or ambulance, department share for September.
Motion to approve.
Paul second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Review and acknowledge the treasures by reconciliation monthly comparison report for September.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Review lines of Clark's monthly report for August.
I'll make the motion.
I'll do that up on.
Well, she's not too different. She has a reported collections and then she has another.
Oh, okay. I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Um. We're waiting on. Yeah. We're back to the rack club. We'll get a moment to settle in. Then work on the transfers as a thing. Home road free. We have two thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars thirty-six cents from ground to contractual services. This is cover the USI invoice for the CCNG construction system. And wow, county general commissioner and solar burial, five thousand two liability insurance to cover expenses between now and the end of the year.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Aye.
And we kind of skipped over the rack of subvention to fly out of the ground.
Okay.
Provable. I didn't know. We need some clarification.
Well, because the reason for the commissioners is that county doesn't have a subdivision of patrol ordinance. So any, to back up further, this was a subdivision that was planted by the city of Covington when it exercised its extraterritorial jurisdiction that covered the area where this subdivision lies. And then after the city relinquished that jurisdiction back to the county, it, the county's jurisdiction is, that's all more or less grandfathered. So that you have an approved plat that went through the city of Covington's process to get approved plat. After that, there was an amendment based on the, my understanding, the layout of the roads. So the, for a replat or a plat amendment, that's not, that is not, because we don't have some division control ordinance, there's a statute that accounts for that. And essentially if the, and even if it were a planning permission matter, approving a plat amendment, approving a plat or a replat or a plat amendment is ministerial. It's not, it's if it meets the requirements and meets the standards, it's just, it's yes or no, there's not discretion to, vote no on it. So because we don't have a subdivision control ordinance by statute, the, if the amended plat meets, basically just meets the standards of the recorder's office, which is if it's in a valid recordable form, then it comes to the county executive for approval. And that's why it's before you down. It's just a simple administrative process.
Did you guys have any questions on that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Aye.
Thank you. The protest control estimate.
Question. Yes, Mr. Ratliff will have, will leave this here. It needs to be signed so it can get recorded, pulled out, signature. It will not be.
Sign by all three?
By all three.
Are you wanting to leave? I mean, we could sign.
It is.
Do we have to sign with any particular color? I think.
It'd be black.
Black?
Yeah.
Okay.
Blue. Even legible for my mother.
Okay. Okay, progress control estimate. We have someone here to.
Yes, yes, progress control. We've only forwarded all emails of the inspection. Just want to know what's your questions you had for me, if any.
I don't have any questions.
So we kind of have contracts under, we want to use a proposing. It's terrible. Would be one hundred and twenty currently, but I'm reading.
Let me clarify on that real quick. So what, what I did, there was, I went on a break and just looked at the full inspection, the entire facility. And basically I'd bring down the services that you're currently being provided with and then my recommendations. There are, what the program that we're doing will be integrated pest management will be more comprehensive. That's what I recommend for this. That is diverse as far as the level of services, but right now it's, you're very low level. You don't ever need to carry your robes. So I mean, that's not like down the competition. It's just the reality. That's what these recommendations are based on. So basically I'm just looking for what other information may need for me to help make a decision and move forward.
Pretty thorough to me what you said.
Yeah.
Rick, do you have any questions?
Well, we've had a lot of trouble with this. We can't keep good people in pest control. We went to a couple of companies that did a terrible, terrible job. They have been outside for a year. The lady would have difficulties. She'll get mess if you.
Okay.
Current contract that we have, is it from month to month? Oh, yeah.
It's so. We really haven't been in near contract since two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
According to the, we call the company just to make sure.
Okay.
It's days come on on a basis. I guess.
I think it happens still. Not one month, you said it, you know, longer period.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
So.
To go with pro pass, yeah.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Okay, the highway safety improvement project and I know Jason had talked about this, we're to counsel to approve this grant for. Signs, pay markings, and the county would be matching, you know, ten percent. Jason, do you have anything you want to say?
Just a few outside impressions of what was, what the plan.
No.
No, I know we had had this conversation and I thought it was good for the county.
Yep.
But then and I'm happy to hear the council saw more as well. So. You want to make a motion, anybody?
I'll make a motion to, to the highway safety improvement project.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
You have any paperwork for the signs right here? Okay, sorry.
Oh, no, he wants to sign it. He said it's not for.
Oh, do you have some for the commissioners too? You like sign interest groups? You had it signed for Brenda too.
Oh, shoot, yeah, there's one for the application too.
Okay, moving on to the, sorry, I got choppy today. Like smart contractors for snow removal and saltin. We did receive estimates. Don't let us see.
It was two, that's hundred twenty-five and one hundred twenty-six. Two separate.
I didn't sign with them. Okay.
Says better than clothes. Yes, that's correct. Well, that, it's just like, it's just two copies.
Okay. So we got the sidewalks, two hundred seventy dollars from time they come. And I think there's stipulations on when they come for snow, whether it will ask me over so many inches.
Two, yeah.
And the snow will be able to solve them. Two hundred eighty-five. Okay.
And I confirmed with them. If, if they don't get the mowing, no snow removal. So. And I don't, Aaron, you haven't been in on this, but for years we fought this and Rick's to the age where he doesn't want to mess with the snow and I don't blame him. I wouldn't either. But to get any of these contractors to do, you know, they want summer and winter work.
Yeah.
They're local and they've been there forever and they've done a good job. I mean, nobody's perfect, especially in a snowstorm. They've, they've done a good jobs.
Okay, so, yeah, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a smart contract.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have a contract for attorney fully presidential recovery solution, none of his family's house. And we have to have contacts for these settlement funds, correct?
Yes. So they have signed this portion of the agreement so far. Yeah.
Yes.
Aaron had a question on the date. It says that being a term runs from January one twenty-four to December thirty-one twenty-four. Is, is that correct on the date or?
Um. We can, by elimination, you can make it, make it longer. I just was trying to cover it. It was a services they're providing right now. It's sure that it can either be renewed in January or you can, you can just strike out twenty-four and put in twenty-five if you want to make it balance.
I don't like. That's right.
I did just.
Cause it just proved it on the nineteenth of August.
I, I think they're going to receive, they're, they're going to receive all those funds in this year. That's why.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
That makes sense. Yep.
That's or that's sure. How do you feel about that?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, second.
In favor?
Aye. Aye.
Our minutes, do I have any? From the department set.
I'll speak.
Or yours.
Um, quickly, we filled the last spots. We're all full on full-time spots now. So hopefully that'll help a little bit. Also, I partnered or become a member of an organization called Indiana EMS Association. It's an organization that helped, you can be as an individual or partner with the ambulance group organization. This organization helps with training. It helps with billing and it helps with legislation. One of the things they worked on was changing the way Indiana Medicaid pays. We were, most of the organizations were receiving around ninety-nine to a hundred dollars. It now with this new legislation come through, it's going to be three to four hundred dollars. They've increased it significantly. They're also looking at changing payment out from other commercial carriers. What time it's, they're looking at maybe change it to where it'd be upwards of four times the amount that they reimburse the services back. Sound like that could be put through and be going into effect in January of twenty twenty-five. So that'll help a lot with our reimbursements and that. So being a part of this organization, I'll be able to stay on top of that and be able to partner with them and help us. You know, any questions we have or challenges we have to fill and they will help us with that. So it's a good thing. So no other analysis points. All I have.
Right. So it's good to belong to those organizations.
Yeah.
Can learn a lot. Only you can implement them.
Jason?
I don't have any questions, you guys have any questions?
Have any else?
We, Jason?
Yes.
Did you see the thank you card from the lady up on East River Road?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that was great. Thank your crew. We very seldom get such things. So.
I don't have anything that you guys have any.
You were the topic of a, a, a state meeting we were at the other day, Fountain County was, so.
Oh, I hope it was positive.
It was not, but not your fault.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Thanks Jenny. You guys are doing an awesome job.
Hey. While I show we are fully staffed, we still have two part-time trainings, so that'll help take over the overtime. Um. Yeah, I think that's all I wanted to go up for you guys. Do you have any questions for us?
Did things get better the other day with the?
With the Apple Fest? Yes, and they went over, turned it down and I got a nice email from the lady that heads all that down there. So she misunderstood communications. So she stated that there'll be no band that will be set up there anymore. So I'm just special to appreciate that.
Okay.
That's also taking care of. I've seen pictures of it and I'm like, right.
Yeah.
I got a recording. Normally they would come to the commissioners to get commission.
Well, they did, they did call. I was contacted and I said, just so you do exactly what you did last year, which was they were in front of the benches. They were actually set up on the steps where they weren't supposed to be. And I don't know whose fault. I'm not throwing blame on anybody. It happened, but everyone should know.
I think they understand now the severity of it. I had got received a recording from inside our dispatch room and you could not hear their phone ringing from that, the van. So they did turn it down.
Good.
And then they were able to keep their, their music and we're supposed to do our jobs. So, yes, good communication.
Okay.
All right. You guys have a great day.
You too. Thanks, Dan.
Okay.
Nope. If I asked Jenny back there? Nope.
Ron, do you have anything for us?
Uh, nothing specific. I would mention though that if you're not on our newsletter, that's how we communicate. We don't really do such media. So please go on our website, liga works, W E G A works at the very bottom. Fill out your name and address and you'll be included on any correspondence. So economic development is going well. We're in the middle of a pretty challenging season with getting grant agreements in place and destruction underway of the business incubator. I can't, I will announce, I guess, that October twenty-first, you're going to start working the exterior of the business incubator, which is long awaited, about nine months. But we did get the grant release, so we're good to go. And I think probably within the next two to three months, you're going to start seeing a lot of things happen. It's just making a while. So long reviews at the moment.
Want to make a comment about? Want to make a comment about where you're going to this party?
Yeah.
I just want, I know it's on Facebook, I said, I will be working for weekend after the first year and that is false. I've never been approached. Nor am I interested.
Why I don't lie like the majority of stuff on a lot of these sites.
I'm a comment that, that is not true. And if someone has a question and they want to post things about my life, I'm learning all kinds of things. Okay. But I've been learning or innovative, so.
Yeah, from we just pointed, we don't, we haven't hired anyone for a while. We plan to hire next spring at least three people. And if you have any questions at all, you can email me or call me. My phone number is on there and I'm happy to answer. If there's no reason not to.
Thank you. Anybody else before we get to the comment? If that's anything you want to bring up? Have a comment?
Yeah, I do. I've got a few things I want to talk to you about. Um, first of all, Brendan Rod, he's not working for Wigan. I saw that post and frankly it pissed me off. So. And the other thing is Rod Bannon didn't write the comprehensive plan.
Right.
He did not write the comprehensive plan. I hope people are listening because he did not. Um, this is all my opinion that I'm going to talk to you about, mindfully, but we you guys are the eight twenty-four commissioners, all three of you. We're it right now. You're administrative body. And what I want to know on the health department is uh, they've got a chance to get quite a bit of money to do some things for the county that will be very good. I just want to know from you three, are you supportive of that? For us to work it, work it into budget? For what, for what, I guess?
Jeff, when we had a meeting with the state health officer, I spoke of.
I know you did.
And my concern was that if the council left, what was being budgeted in the health fund, the local health maintenance and the trust fund, I know you can combine those.
Right.
I didn't want to do away with what we're doing there. With this extra money, I want to do something new.
That, that's.
Express that.
That's what I want, but there was discussion in the council meeting the last time that we need, you know, work on cutting some of that out because there's overlap. And I just want to know how you guys feel. I mean, that's, that's where we're at.
What do you mean overlap?
Just, just like, oh, the phone bill, there's, there's two in that budget that Jenny gave us. There's one, there's one in things like that.
I guess, and I did listen to the last.
I was hoping.
They were talking about the local health maintenance and, and so if we're unable to merge those funds together, you're not going to have that. But I don't want to, I don't want to take away with what the health department is doing right now. And this extra additional money.
Right.
I want.
Was meant for extra programs.
Okay.
That's why the state.
Being produced.
Is that, does that what the three of you agree on?
Well, yeah.
Going into the.
I mean, that was, we agreed.
Cause there was, there was talk in the council meeting that it was, was agreed on.
I said in the council meeting.
I get, I, I know.
Their assumption that no one will reach out to me and ask me.
That's what I'm doing.
And, and I was at that meeting and I expressed.
Okay.
What I wanted. I wanted whatever we are doing now.
I, I just.
Continue to do that and then the extra money, let's do something.
I just want it on record.
Exactly what the state expects.
Wanted on that.
I was talking to Jenny about just now was about.
So you're not for any cutting?
Absolutely not a dime.
All right.
So on that overlap that he's talking about, I just want to clarify that as well. That is not overlap. That's the combined for the year. The way that the budget went out, you know, the county budget, we had to submit that at a certain time. That state budget was later on. But those are combined amounts. It's not an overlap or a double dipping. It's a combined.
Right. That's what I thought. Yes. You were going to be combining some of those funds that we have done in the past. Right. And so.
And next year it'd be more streamlined. It was just a timing of those budgets that they got submitted. So I, you know, we just need that clarification of how, you know, depending on the timing manner of the year with those budgets. So, yeah, we just need that clarification.
Sure.
That answered my question. I just want it on record. The other one was WHIN, W H I N. It's the Wabash Innovation Network, Heartland Innovation Network. We still have our funding that. It's been talked about in the budget meeting that there's a possibility that we won't. And I just want to know how you three felt about that.
I've always been a strong supporter when I think they do a lot of positive things for the region. And I would want to continue to fund it, but that's next year. So that's a next year contract. As far as this year, I mean, if your budget's for next year, so I would say do it another year. I mean, it's up to Brendan and Aaron.
I'm moving out next year, but you know, it does offer more than what we're utilizing it for, obviously. I think there's more farmers that are popping in. I know the stone cypress are.
They've brought wireless to Attica and Petersburg. We can spread it all around the county too, where the farmers can actually get a good signal in their combines and things.
Keystone co-op too.
They've done a lot more than what people know.
I just, I think the same thing that I wanted to know.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Aaron?
I, I think it was a positive before. We had fiber stretched all over the county for communications. Now that fibers, we have fiber in Newtown, which means fibers everywhere in the county.
Well, but you can't have fiber in the combine.
No, but.
And everybody's not going to be hooked.
We can't. So.
That's, that's the biggest thing. You can't have fiber in combine. Now that, they're, they're ag-based. I mean.
Yeah.
And that's what there's, that's what the things were, I mean. For the people that, you know, and there might be still places in the county and we are very fortunate to have, to have tip on. Um, but there are still going to be pockets that can't get, or won't get fiber taken to them.
And, and just so you know, where I live, I'm less than a mile from Lynn. It's not available to me. I'm still on a city electric, even though I'm three miles out of town. One mile the other way is tip on.
Tip on.
And so I'm not eligible for any of this. So I got a line on AT&T. Well, now Spectrum is now.
Yeah, between Spectrum and tip on, we don't have a lot of county covered, but not all of it.
That's just me, you know.
Yeah.
Well, I think we're using RTK, which is a free service and it's available anywhere that a farmer goes. Otherwise they can use John Deere signal or I'm, I'm assuming KSH has signal as well. So I'm sure there are some people that are using Lynn, but it's a moot point because they use the free service. I know that's what we use and it's available everywhere we go.
Okay. Well, when I know that people think it's them doing it, they set the technology up and then local providers take it from there. So.
They have groups that they work with.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, okay.
Uh, thank you, Kelly.
Um, kinda the final thing is I wanna address three people, uh, about three people. One's Roger Azar. I'll read this. I wrote it. You can read into it whatever you want, but he is doing what he's asked to do. Commissioners, APC assessors, sit council, get in his ear. I think his head's gotta be swimming with all the stuff he's gotta do. Uh, think he's very talented and a good source now. It comes with a cost and that's part of, we don't, and he's from Proversville, big deal. But I, I have a lot of confidence in Roger. I just wanna put that in the record. And, uh, that's my opinion only and, uh, he's doing the best he can. So, that's just how I feel about that. Kent Minette, he's our county attorney. Same thing as Roger, my comments are, he works for a county, he's giving us legal advice when asked. He's not going to jeopardize his license and do anything unethical. I mean, give me a break. Everybody jumps on him. I, I, what I'm upset about was that post. That's just.
Well, these people posting this stuff is absolutely false. It's a shame that there's not a way you can go, we can go against them.
Yeah.
And get this stopped. And you know, I see people comment all the time because they believe it. They believe it to be true.
I, I, I'll say something else about Kent. I, I don't know him very well, but I've seen him in public with some things. He, he's on the school board, he works with kids. He's a outstanding person, I think, for working with these kids and doing what he does, so. And I'm not doing that. I just, I just felt like compelled to say that. The other thing was Dudley, hurry. I had, I, there was a couple conversations with a couple folks that lately I got calls about my comments at council meeting on having Dudley as a consultant. He has lost an election and there could be more changes in our council, but he would only be a consultant and counsel us when we want him to. If he accepts and is approved, the council would listen and consider his recommendation and that's all. He won't run meetings, he can't vote, he'll advise us only. I think he'd be a good reference to source, my opinion only. So I'm gonna put that on the record. Uh, I got a couple calls on that because he lost the election, but, and it may not come inspiration, but that's just a conversation we were gonna have to have, so I just wanted you guys to know that.
I think you ought to broaden your horizons too, Jeff, and look at other consultants.
Okay.
Because I promise you, there are other consultants out there that are not ten years into Fountain County with.
I understand.
You have other counties that you can reach out to, the council would go to conferences and use that as a network to, to share what's going on in your county. What did, did you have this and what'd you do about it and did it work or did it not?
Yeah. But I just, I just wanted to throw that out there. That's why.
And that's because dangerous, dangerous help you.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Baker Tilly, for instance.
Are we gonna go back to the days when Ron Howard came in and consulted the council that signed, that were elected to do their job? And then you have someone event, because I can tell you, when I came in and Ron Howard first year, I got, he goes, you don't need my help. And I said, no. I signed up to help, you know, to do the budget, submit it to the council commissioner. I've been doing the commissioner's budget since twenty thirteen, but I'm accused of not sharing that information at the time. I submitted it May ten or doubt it May ten, submitted it May seventeen, and Andrew is still commissioner, and I did discuss next year's budget with him when I submitted it. Okay?
Okay. Last thing is I don't know why any of us would wanna be in county government currently.
Amen.
You risk your integrity. If you're in business, you risk your customers. It's a thankless job. I admire anyone who takes on political service, school board, APC, any other county offices. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jeff.
But that post.
Well.
Thank you, Bill. I think I need to make this note, maybe four or five. There was things written on whoever Fountain County's swamp cleaner is. I really don't care who they are. Um, I don't let what goes on public social media bother me. Everybody's entitled to their opinion and there's a lot of keeper, people are lawyers out there. I'm not gonna respond to any of those posts because I'm not gonna get into an argument online.
That's exactly what we've never done.
But I will make a statement. There was something made online on Fountain County Swamp Cleaner that we have something to do with the city of Attica. We have nothing to do with the city of Attica. What they choose to do with their downtown and with their businesses that are in that town is up strictly up to them. We have nothing to do with them. They may come and ask us a question or ask me personally a question, but we have nothing to do with them. And for someone to think that we do, obviously they don't understand how city government works versus county government. And if anybody wants to know anything about me personally or my position here in the council. My phone number is listed on the website. I would be more than happy to talk to anybody. I'm open. My phone is available to anybody till seven PM and after that, that's my time. You have all day to call me. If you wanna email me, my email is on the county website. Email me, I will get back to you. If you prefer to text, I'll text you back. But I am available seven days a week, even on Sunday. So before people start throwing accusations out there about everybody in county government, come and ask us. I'm an open book and I have been from day one. If you go back and watch the meetings, then you will see that I've been upfront about everything about myself. So there shouldn't be any room for speculation. And I don't appreciate it. Because this is a thankless job. And I chose to do it. And I chose to go for reelection and I'm still wondering why I did it. Because I care. I care what goes on in this county and, and I care about the citizens and I care about our tax dollars that are being used to fund the operation of this county. And everybody has heard me saying, every department in this county works in partnership with the council and the commissioners. If we don't have a partnership, we might as well forget it. That's the way that we run our business, our army business. Everybody that we rent laying front, it is a partnership with those people. Because we would not be successful without them and their property would not be taken care of. So it's time to stop all the speculation. If anybody wants to know anything, come and ask us. We'll tell you and we will be honest. Watch the meetings. We're not hiding anything.
I agree.
And we only have, oh, we only have control over so many funds. I think there's ten, maybe eleven. The rest of that, the set states. So. I'm an open book. Come and talk to me. I'll talk to you.
For all the commu-, uh, administrators of all these sites, I agree with you one hundred percent, Kelly. I mean, I've set it up here before too. You've put a little better than what I've ever put it. But this is, this stuff's gotta end. We've got vendors all over the state of Indiana that will, are not gonna come to Fountain County. It's scary.
You know, they're, they're entitled to their opinion. They're entitled to have their social media site, but just before you put anything out there, get the facts first.
That doesn't make, that doesn't make for good Facebook.
I know.
So, there you go. Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, I kinda wanted to address that too.
I guess I need you to state your name, like, maybe I kinda stated their name.
Pardon me?
Could you state your name?
I'm Bill Brewer. Can I say?
She can.
I saw that post too. I saw a lot of posts, Fountain County watch though. We beat a dead horse here for I don't know how long over Roger Azar's ability or legality of running what he runs here in this county. I asked a simple question on my phone. In Indiana counties, without elected surveyors, employment of engineers or surveyors by a board, which basically says you have a right as a board to hire someone, and I will read this. If for any reason there is no elected county surveyor in this county, which we do not have, the board shall employ and fix the compensation of a part-time or full-time engineer or surveyor. The engineer or surveyor who must be registered under IC twenty-five dash point five or IC twenty-five dash thirty-one and must become a resident of Indiana. Not Fountain County, Indiana. Shall perform the functions required of the county surveyor in this chapter. He does the paperwork. He doesn't go out and do surveying. It's a dead horse, people. Put that on your fun facts.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Sarah, we can play a panel here. If we're clearing out what was posted, I'd like to know if Roger works for Ratcliffe.
Uh, I'm, I'm a designer for some of the subdivisions. I don't work for him. He does not pay me as an employee. He pays me as a consultant. I'm an engineering firm that he uses and multiple, multiple other developers and properties will use. I do not get a check directly from Ratcliffe that says, look, he's my employee. I do not work for Ratcliffe.
Okay, uh, this subdivision that Ratcliffe has had, I'm trying to remember. Um, I can't try to explain it, but I'll win all over my, on, over my head there. Um, now, will the road be widened before it's turned over to the county?
I don't, I don't know if you know that. I think the, I don't know.
Well, it's anything we've done or taken money.
I, I don't think we have to take. I don't, I don't know. I don't know if the road is gonna be turned over. It might remain outside of the road in that subdivision.
So the county won't be scraping it during the winter months or anything like that?
I don't know that.
Don't you think we should be finding that out?
I mean, that's the, we, the county doesn't have subdivision. We follow it. So it wasn't, it's, that's, I'm, I'm.
Right now it's a private road.
I understand that, but it's my understanding that eventually it'll be turned over to the county.
Not until it's boarded, yeah. For this board to, whoever's on this board, that's for them to decide when it comes to time, but right now it's private road.
It's up to the developer actually.
And, um, will these meetings be held in the evening at any point in time?
That's a, that'll, not until January one. That's up to the, that'll be up to the new board deciding.
And this ready two point O, is that a matching grant?
Yeah, so it is matching, um, they require a, let me think about this. They require a one-to-one match, or I'm sorry, one-to-one match public and three-to-one match private. So the public match is, um, it's a little different than other grants. It's only showing that there's been that amount of investment within the county. And it's not a cash, just visitor product. So basically the IDC requires you to identify if you're spending two million dollars in grant, that somewhere in the county, someone has spent two million dollars on public facilities. And that's all we have to do is to show that we have made that investment within the county within that year. Um, the three-to-one match is handled by the developer. So Ferguson, some of the housing districts, uh, that are going in, I don't think, it's not associated with this grant or what, but uh, some of the housing districts that are going in, the subdivisions, um, they're spending millions. And so if they get two million, they're more than able to cover the three-to-one match.
Okay, how will you match your two point five if we were to do it?
On the private side?
On any side?
Well, so there's a two million dollar number associated with the business incubator. Um, and that will be matched by apartments. The private match will be matched by apartments in Attica. So, uh, there are two developers that are currently building apartments or working on apartments and that's the private match.
And how often is there a match and Attica gets their match?
So they're coming, yeah, so Covington got, um, those were ready one dollars associated with the sewer plant and, uh, with the housing district Shiloh. Um, that is a private match basically handled through the Shiloh development, so that's that. Um, the, let me think about this, the, there isn't any Covington ready two dollars. Uh, that is an outer project and so that will be handled also, yeah, right. So we're in, for instance, last year, uh, the county did, uh, Crossroads Grant, right, to do, uh, Stringtown Road. Uh, so there's, I think, two million dollars in that that was spent. There was money spent in the sewer plant, you know, that's, uh, within the county, so it's allowed. Um, some grants will take that amount, if it's a state agency, they'll take that private match or public match and they'll put it in the system and you can't reuse it, right, because they don't want that being shared between the agencies. This is run by IDC, which is a nonprofit, so they don't do that. All we have to do is show that within the county that money has been spent, uh, public money and then we met our criteria.
So wega will not be asking for any more money from the taxpayers?
None, no, none at all.
Please repeat that, uh, wega, no, wega works at the website.
Wega, oh, W E G A works, W O R K S dot com. Yeah, so to be clear, we never really asked for money associated with grants from the taxpayers. We had a, uh, Harvard grant that we early on asked the county to provide for the business incubator building. Um, and they did that, but all of these grants, the ready two, the ready one, the lilies, you know, all of those are coming in. Uh, that, we're not asking the county for any taxpayer money. So those are separate projects that are handled by, for instance, the city of Athens has spent close to three million dollars downtown. I mean, people are kind of worried about that. They spent their own money, you know, uh, and then they got grants also. So, um, each project kind of rides on its own and we help figure out how to meet the grant criteria, but we're not coming back to the county to ask the county to pay for it.
But Rod, I think that we still are contracted, you're, the wig is contracted by the county developer. Right, to, uh, work on economic development. So there is some tax money.
Oh, sure, for, for our management services, that's part of what we do for the county, is provide this service. Uh, so that if there wasn't anyone here doing that, a lot of those grades would fall on the wayside and we would not have access to them. Because it takes a tremendous amount of work to sort out, uh, and to apply for them. So right now, in the year that we've been working, we're up to nine million dollars with the grants for the county. Now, they're not all awarded, but we've, uh, we've won those on behalf of, of projects. You hear that, Carol? Wega does, we pay wega to, for those services as far as that, okay? So that's, that's, we do take some. But I understand there's a cost there, but there's also an advantage because like I just said, we got nine million dollar additional grant money coming into the county, but spurred new housing, which spurs new tax base. And so that's, that's what we're working on.
Yeah. And the, the state meeting Brenna and I attended two weeks ago, they were talking that, and I didn't quite follow it all, but property taxes are getting maxed out. And, uh, the state's looking for different ways. Well, what they're looking to do is basically more local income tax. And the more people you have living in your county, the better off you are. So Fountain County dying like we are right now. Um, we need, we need this economic development growth in housing and get people to move here and live here. Or, you know, it's not gonna be a positive thing in five years. Or, you know, it's not gonna be a positive thing in five or ten years, so. Um, so everybody upset about subdivisions and new houses in their area and apartment buildings. You know, you're gonna be upset when your taxes are sky high too, if these people don't come, so.
And if you want to reiterate, for anyone worried about that, we're only focused in urban areas where they want it. You know, Attica's very happy to grow, and so we're working on that. Covington, um, you know, on the housing side, Brad, Brad doesn't really need much help, but we're available. We're gonna start working on some commercial, and, um, so we're just, we're here to help move things forward if we want it.
My name is Jeff, because I don't know if I'm out of place, since I'm not on the agenda, but I have a request to make, if I may.
Sure.
I recently bought lots twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight in Cates. And I found out that there's an alley running between lots twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-one, and twenty-two. And it, it doesn't look like there's anything there, and I need to get those combined into one parcel. And I was told I need to get the alley vacated, so if possible, I would like to request to have that vacated.
There's a statutory process to vacate, uh, a public right of way, uh, like an alley, so if. Uh, you can stick around after me, and I'll talk with, with you and Pauline about the information you need to provide.
Absolutely.
Commissioners can. Uh, you can move that forward.
Anything else?
One thing I'll say about Kent and his law firm. We are, we are, we have been very blessed to have Kent's law firm because of their knowledge on municipal and county government. Uh, you know, people, I hear it all the time, well, Kent, he always has to look stuff up. Yeah, because there's millions of pages of laws. You'd be a fool to stand up here and say, oh yeah, I know that, and just shoot off the head. We are very well protected by Kent, and I just, I just felt the need to, to put that out there, and the same with Roger. Um, and I know that it'll be on, uh, fun facts here this week, so go ahead and put her out there. I'm paid off by whoever, but, um, we're very blessed to have these guys working with us in our county. And that's all I gotta say.
I, I do have a question in regards to the, uh, the plan commissions meeting. Last week, you guys had a vote on the comprehensive plan with five of, but then the question was brought up about two individuals that need to be reappointed. Um, I know years ago, I don't recall the commissioners having to reappoint. Um, they just stayed on, is it the plan commission that, um, would reappoint, um, individuals for a new term?
Well, two things. First, the, um, the recertification of the plan commission vote on the comprehensive plan needs to be on the next meeting's agenda for the commissioners. And then, uh, so that can be finally approved.
Okay, and see, I thought that was coming on your agenda, I didn't see it, but I did, I know there was questions about the reappointments and everything, and.
Well, I, I think it, just to clean it up, to, you can have a vote to to re- reappoint or ratify the, the continued, um, uh, service of those members. But in, in a, in a meeting, if a person appears who has been, um, you know, appears under the authority of, an understanding of appointment, that it's, unless it's challenged, uh, before a meeting, um, I think it is. It's, it's valid, uh, for them to, to sit at that time. But I think you can, on the next agenda, you, you can take a look at all of the, all the commissioners' current appointments.
Well, because we don't appoint all of them on the fact, that's right. Some of them are stashing away.
The current plan commission and, um, ratify the ones that, that we would. And people have such information for us to.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know, he keeps tracking.
We need to add in our records, and I have some, but I don't have a lot of them. Okay, but it's okay. And I did ask, ask if there was anything else that needed to go on the agenda, and.
But so it.
Got no reply or.
I, I didn't know what the status was on that, it's, and the commissioners have ninety days from that meeting to, to rule on that.
Hopefully we can, um. If anybody has any record, I don't have time, when you would send out the notes, maybe Aaron, you could share that with Oliver and Tim and I and Kent of the current members and their, uh, term. Because I thought at one time I read some of the Facebook, so it's probably.
Brenna?
I may or may not have forgot to give you that code, but I want it out there so anybody can look it up.
I know you started to talk about a code.
Yeah, if you're on the spot, you kinda get confused up there sometimes, so. It is thirty-six dash nine dash twenty-seven dash thirty-one of Indiana law.
Thank you. Okay.
I just have a question, I'm saying aside from, um, before I tell Jeff. I wanna know if the, my Springtown Road and all that, I mean, the, the lines are already set, are they gonna put a yellow line down the middle?
No.
Your loss.
Well, see, plenty of deals. And one to read, well, what. It's, it's, it's really expensive to put those lines on there, and I understand it's important. The reason we probably just put them on the outside is to keep you from, obviously going off in the ditch. But you know, down at Case, and then, and Kingman Black Dog, when they put the double yellow line in, they have to put it in because of, or you have to probably a lot of studies on if it can pass there or not. So it's a legality type thing, a lot of money spent. People complained, well, I can't pass it, so it's a no-win situation. You know, you try to get safety, well, I, I can't pass it. Well, you know, I don't know what to tell you. Uh, so yeah, but the Springtown Road, that's why we did the, just the lines.
Or I would prefer it would be helpful if something was down in the center, but they like to take their, have a goal on my side.
Yeah.
That's a line. Okay, we have a ten o'clock meeting, so.
Yes, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna cut this meeting, or we gotta hit block. Again.
I've been listening to all the negative Facebook stuff that went out there. I don't do Facebook, so I don't get in on that, but evidently there are several people in this room that do. And why don't you put some positive comments out there? You don't have to leave that out there, but just put some cop, positive comments out there, so that people know what is good is going on in the county.
And, and we have tried to do, like Rob spoke about his website, we, we have a link on our website to take you there, so that you can read what's going on. We get everything, uh, information that, you know, he's wanting to share, what's going on in the county and everything, but. People would rather.
We did that earlier on, we had people in our board get on and speak and correct things, and it was turned into a fight. And we got worse, so that's why we did it.
Instead of people on the board, how many individuals here are, are not a part of the boards and what? Why won't they put some positive comments?
They, they don't wanna be attacked.
They don't want to attack themselves, because they had a target to stand up for what's really going on, and they didn't attack, and they don't wanna do it, I don't want them to.
I appreciate the point, yeah, I was told to move to China, because I said something in there. Bringing on somebody's free speech. What about my free speech, huh?
Yeah, there is. I'm, I'm sorry, I.
Okay.
No, that's.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Like two, I said.
I'll make a motion to close soon.
I'll say it.
I'll go.
All right.